Hello?
Testing, one, two, three.
Hello?
Testing, testing, testing. Tell me when I have to stop talking. How's that?
Hello?
Can you imagine how much I love you?
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Board of Education meeting for October 27th, 2020. Please rise for the...
Nope.
Nope, not rise.
We're not going to do that.
I'm like...
We are going to do that at a time to come shortly.
In a minute. Public comment for... So the first thing, we will skip the pledge of allegiance right now. Public comment, students first. Do we have any students? I don't have any thing here. No call-ins? Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Board of Education meeting for October 27th, 2020. Please rise for the...
Nope.
Nope, not rise.
We are not going to do that.
I'm like...
We are going to do that at a time to come shortly.
In a minute. Public comment for... So the first thing, we will skip the pledge of allegiance right now. Public comment, students first. Do we have any students? I don't have any thing here. No call-ins? No students. All right. Then now is the time for the rest of the public comment. And as a member of the pub... A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Please note that students will be given priority to speak on any subject. The first public participation portion of the meeting will be limited to one half hour, 30 minutes normally, and limited to agenda items. A second public participation portion will be offered at the end of the agenda to allow for any other comment. Individuals addressing the board should take into consideration the rules of common courtesy. The public participation portion of the meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks against a board member, district employee, or student. So if people are calling in, you might want to call in and get in line. We have two public comments right now. Brian Bozey. Boz? Boz? Sorry. Thank you, Brian. Next is Carrie Grove.
Hello? So my item might not be on the agenda. It's a comment from something that happened two weeks ago. Is this appropriate? Okay. So I want to give an alternate opinion. I heard last meeting that there was some concern about the school resource officer and some issue about some fear there. I need you to know that I have a student in the schools and a graduate. In 2017, my daughter made a comment in second period. She said it to her friend quietly. It was overheard and misinterpreted. By fourth hour, it spread, like gossip does in the school, and seven students over the internet threatened her with bodily harm. She found out about it, was able to go to the school counselor and the resource officer. At that time, it was Officer Neen. He immediately contacted us and the other parents involved. We were given the option of pressing charges against those other students. So I value the resource officer, and I want you to know that there's a purpose there. And he stepped in and saved the consequences of those kids that might have had really different experiences right now. Thank you.
Do we have any call-ins? We do not have call-ins. Okay. So we're going to move to administration board updates?
Yeah. Administration, I would like to first have a subtle guest within my administration update that I'd like to like Kelly Hanson forward and tell you that the Celine work for the department to ask you to prepare a nice paper on the public lineup.
So good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I thought if we have to do something late at night, I might as well put my bit emoji up on it. So have a little fun with that. My name is Kelly Hanson. I am one-half of the quote-unquote "the Kellys." That's how we've been referenced lately. So I thought it was important to come up here and put a face to a name. I am the Celine Area Schools PAC rep. PAC stands for Parent Advisory Committee. This is special education-driven. And I have another special role of I'm actually the chair for the WISD version of this. So that means all of the districts in Washtenaw County send reps to our meetings, and we talk about things that are going on through the districts. We bring information back. We bring up things that are happening that maybe we can resolve. We talk to different districts about topics. I thought it was important to share our mission statement just so that the board can understand where we're coming from. So our mission statement is the Washtenaw Intermediate School District, WISD, PAC Advisory Committee, consists of parents of students of special needs. We advise the WISD concerning planning and implementation of special education programs and services. We work to ensure student success by strengthening the local schools, families, communities through collaboration, use of best practices, technology, and a wide variety of strategies. So you think, okay, Kelly, how did you get this role? How'd you get here? So my day job is I'm a school social worker. So I deal with both sides of the table, which puts me in a unique situation. I understand what the schools are going through right now, and it's tough. Really, really tough. And then it's really tough for special education kids to go through this right now, too. So I want to draw the attention to the Celine CIAC email. That is for parents to reach out to me and Kelly Van Single, who's the other half of me, to help with concerns, help with figuring out who they need to talk to, or just having a friendly person to say, hey, you got this. Is there any questions? I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other administration updates?
Just to echo some of the things that we've heard over the last couple of meetings. The staff and families continue to work very hard at making sure that the kind of the fragile environment we have continues to progress. And I really do applaud and thank the efforts to make sure that the students who are coming, the virtual students, all have the opportunities to access the curriculum and access education to the best of our abilities. None of us intended on being part of a pandemic. However, we will continue to push to get as much academic content and social-emotional support for all of our students. And again, I am very proud of the efforts that we are making and want everyone to understand we will continue to push.
Thank you. Board updates? We're going to start with our student rep, please.
Hello, everyone. So I'll start with sports. They're wrapping up and moving farther into the playoffs. Soccer is playing in about 15 minutes for regionals. Cross-country did well at SEC Reds. And football has their first playoff game against Pioneer on Friday. And finally, field hockey plays for the state quarterfinals tonight. So go Celine in all of those. With clubs, Science Olympiad placed high and had some individual high-place finishers at the recent competitions. Culture Appreciation Club wrapped up its month of talking about China with a lantern art project. And Student Council is doing a pumpkin carving contest for Halloween. Clubs are... There's a lot more happening with clubs. I just mentioned a few, but they're finding creative and interesting ways to continue doing what they want to do. For the... My things, I'm still working on setting up a feedback group and hope to have that done by the next meeting. For kids' opinions on COVID and the hybrid learning, there was a survey sent out to all the students at the high school by the administration, and I got to look at some of those results. The results pretty much fell in line with conclusions that I reached by talking to a few people two weeks ago. There's some varying opinions, lots of positive, some negative, and some things that other people like, some people don't like. So just trying to find a common ground there. And finally, the most, probably most pressing thing on everyone's mind, the election is next week. So at the high school, we're doing a few things for that. Shiony Bandyopadia, the senior class president, sent out some voter registration invoice to the lucky 18-year-olds who get to partake in this election. For the kids who don't get to actually vote, the mock election ballot was sent out to all the students at the high school. So the results will be announced next Wednesday. And then finally, I'm lucky, I'm 18, I'll be voting and working the polls. However, most of the students in the district are not 18. So on behalf of all of those, I urge all of the people here who can vote to go out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're gonna start...
Before we go, I have two quick things that I forgot. One is I wanted to announce that Brian Boz will be speaking again at the end of the meeting with update. His audio was not on, and I know some people have indicated they're interested in hearing that. And then, secondly, the... I did want to announce the data related to Zoom. One of the things I want people to know that since September 1st, we've had 23,128 Zoom meetings as a school district with about 667,007 participants, encompassing 1.8 million minutes of Zoom time. So when we talk about what's going on educationally, whether or not we're providing time, we're worried about screen time, but I will tell you, there's a lot of content being delivered digitally. So just wanted to share the information. Troy Wisnick in our technology department pulled that for me. That's as of a little while ago.
Superintendent Graydon, could you repeat the first number? 23,108? Is that what you said?
23,128 meetings since September 1st. That's through October 22nd.
Okay, we're gonna do board comments. We're gonna start down at this end. Jennifer, do you have any comments?
Yep, and I'll go quick because I saw kids, so I want to get to that. Last week, I attended an MESB-sponsored webinar on mental health and stress management. I thought it was very interesting. It was done by a school social worker, and it was mostly talking about staff. It was talking about students, but it was talking about staff. And I thought it was really interesting because a lot of times we say cliches, like we're all in the same boat, but we have to remember that in different individuals, students or staff, have different needs. And I thought she did a really nice job of communicating some tips and tricks and found out later from Scott that the training that was mentioned on the webinar was being done in our district the next day. So that was very good.
Dennis?
Nothing to report for me. I just want to remind my finance committee members, we'll have a meeting next Monday, so the day before the election.
Tim?
So I joined the Friday Night Light Zoom on Friday. The Foundation of Celine Area Schools had. And I just want to commend them and all their hard work. I mean, they put together a really good Friday Night Lights presentation and stuff. And in this weird environment we're in, they pulled something off and were able to get the people together.
Paul?
Hi. Last week, we had our CQC meeting. We had a really great presentation about dementia and how to make Celine a dementia-friendly town. So I did get some soft copies of the presentation, so I'll send those out to everybody. And the police department has remodeled part of the basement into a weight room so the officers can get some relief. So if anyone has any used equipment that they might not be using, get all the Chief Heart and see what they still need. They still had a couple of things that they're missing.
Michael?
I really don't have a lot to report, except this week, as you know, I was working on trying to build a slate of representatives from across Washtenaw to serve the Washtenaw Association of School Boards. And I think we're getting close. So thank you.
Susan?
Yes. So I wanted to second what our... What Noah talked about, which was vote next Tuesday. It's a big election, so be sure to turn out. If you have an absentee ballot, make sure that you don't mail it and take it to your township, your city, where... Yeah, where you're registered to vote. So... Let me see. And then last week, putting on mom hat and board hat at the same time, Heritage, they had their NWEA testing. We have terrible internet at home, so that was interesting. But I was able to get secure internet so my son could take his test with no issues. And I just wanted to... Just seeing how his teacher is navigating everything and constantly troubleshooting and, you know, being afar, like from afar, she had to like, you know, accept whenever the student was registered to get them started. So it was like, you know, with 30-some students, right? You're navigating all of that, and some students can't get in. So in addition to doing all of the preparing of lessons and, you know, helping with the students, helping to navigate, they're doing a lot. So it went well, all the students. So yeah. That's virtual, completely virtual. Sorry.
Thank you.
That could be in person, but yeah.
You know, I just want to thank the... All the teachers, all the parents. You guys are all doing an amazing job at making sure we are engaging the kids as much as we possibly can. It's a difficult time right now, but thank you for everybody's efforts in what we're doing. Next thing is our response to public comment, and we want to thank you all for the comments from last week, or last couple of weeks. We appreciate the feedback on the school resource officer position, our return-to-school plan, and the efforts of the staff to provide some normalcy in the midst of the pandemic. We really do appreciate the We really do appreciate the feedback that we're receiving, and we're doing everything we can to try to respond, you know, to all of the, the feedback that, that we're receiving. So continue to communicate with us, we do appreciate that. Next on the agenda is any revisions on the agenda or motion to approve the agenda as printed? Moved to approve by Michael, seconded by Tim. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose the same. Motion carried, seven zero. Next is scheduled report. Now we have the kids.
Good evening. My name is Kenyatta Hughes. I am the proud principal of Pleasant Ridge Elementary. Here this evening, I have some of PR's brightest and best virtual learners. Can you wave, guys? Oh, they can't wave right now. Okay. They look cute though, right? Okay. And we are here this evening to showcase some of the great things that are happening in our virtual settings, virtual classrooms with our virtual learners. I would like to say that we are living in a largely unprecedented time, and I would like to say that our staff, teachers, and families are doing a great job of stepping up to meet the evolving needs of our students. The pandemic has created some new challenges, if you would agree, and they forced upon some demands to be more creative in adaptations with students. And I would like to say that I'm very proud of Mrs. Caldwell, along with other staff members who are rising to the occasion to meet these challenging times. Without further ado, Mrs. Caldwell.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me tonight. First graders, can you see me? Can you wave to me? Yeah? Can you hear me okay? Touch your nose if you can hear me. Touch your nose if you can hear me. Yeah, there we go. Okay. It's set up a little bit different, so I'm trying to figure out how it's going to work tonight. So give me just one second. I'm a virtual teacher at Pleasant Ridge, so this is a new experience for me. I'm still a person that carries around a paper calendar, so this is.
Miss Caldwell, you're on mute.
I'm not, thanks, Ethan. Do you know, Mr. J, do you know why that's happening? He says I'm on mute, he can't hear me. Oh, yeah. Ethan, can you hear me, though? I don't think he can hear me. Austin, can you hear me? Give me a thumbs up if you can hear me. I don't think they can hear me. Anna, can you hear me? You're on mute. Anna, can you hear me? Anna, take yourself off mute. Take yourself off mute, Anna. They can't hear me. Sorry. I know. You guys can all follow my signs.
I can hear you, but I'm, I. We can hear you, but you, but you're.
So.
You can use this one? Okay. And now I'm going to unmute this one. Okay, can you guys hear me now? Thumbs up, yay! Okay. So you guys have been so patient, and I'm grateful for you to come tonight. We're going to show everybody a little glimpse of what we do in the classroom. Are you guys ready? All right, so I'm going to share my screen, just like you would in the classroom, and can you guys get your boards ready and show me what to do? So today, you're supposed to draw a picture to show how you are feeling. It's off. It's off. And write one word to go with it. Can you guys hold it up to show me? They're all muted. I see happy, awesome. Who else can show me? Oh, lots of. Good job, you guys. Let me see it. Hold it up a little higher, Emma. Good work, lots of happies tonight. Ashton, I love to see you work. Good job. All right, put your caps on your marker, put your sock down, and let's stand up and say the pledge. Would everybody join us? Let's see, do I have a volunteer to say the pledge for us tonight? It looks like Caroline's not here. Anna, you want to do it for us? Unmute yourself.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. For one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So each day, we have somebody different say the pledge for us, and on Constitution Day, they each made their own flag. So, um, let's do this. Sorry about the sound. First graders, we're going to show them how we read some poems together. So even if you're not a reader at this moment, I want your eyes and be reading with us. So. And I'm going to have Cruz read the title. Eva, you're going to do the first line. Maggie, you're going to be scarecrow one. Camden, you'll be scarecrow two. Austin, three. Winnie, four. MJ, five. And Emma, you're going to finish for us. Remember, friends, unmute yourself. Give me a thumbs up if you're ready. Oh, awesome. Okay, Cruz, here we go.
Five steps scarecrows. Five steps scarecrows in the cornrows.
The first one said, "Go away, crows." The second one said, "I am very small."
The third one said, "I am standing tall."
Winnie, you're four.
The fourth one said, "On my head I wear hats."
The fifth one said, "By my feet runs a cat."
Five steps scarecrows in the cornrows, moving left and right as the autumn wind blows.
Nice job, friends, good reading. All right, can you do me a favor? And we're going to switch to math, and we're going to show them how we practice patterns and count by fives. And we're going to play freeze. Are you ready? So I want you to write the number that comes next, and you need to unfreeze me by putting down the right number. Here we go. Zero, five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five. Help! Can I have a volunteer to count for your friends? All right, Anna, go for it, nice and loud. Now, everybody listen, Anna's going to freeze.
Five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five.
Write the number, she's frozen. Oh, make sure your numbers don't get invaded by that backwards guy. Check it. I see one backwards number. All right, put your whiteboards down. Good job, Ashton. Anna, do you want to call on a friend?
Anna.
Okay. Emma? Unmute yourself.
Zero, five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, forty, forty-five.
So we use slates a lot to get immediate feedback. Put a zero first. Austin, double check. Good job. You're unfrozen, Emma, good work. All right, these kids had a long time. Did you guys wait a long time to get in? So do you think everybody needs to do a movement break with us? All right, so Naomi, can you ask everyone to stand up? Tell them to stand up.
Stand up.
And Naomi, what are we going to do?
Jumping jacks.
How many?
Ten.
Okay, you count for us, here we go.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Good job. Ashton, could you tell us what to do? What's our movement going to be? Ashton, what are we going to do?
I'll do, stop, stop, stop.
How many?
I got elephant.
How many?
Ten.
Ten, like an elephant, here we go. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Good job. Thank you for participating. First graders, you did a great job. Can you say either wave goodbye, give me a fist bump, or a virtual hug? And you guys are free to go, go get a good night rest, read a book. Hey, good job. See ya. And I'm going to, bye, guys. I'm going to show you one more thing. As many of you talked about, there's some different things that come up with virtual learning, and the host can actually get kicked out of the meeting, and it's fun when kids are left alone. So, and it turns into a great writing opportunity. So this is Olivia's writing that she wrote, and it just came back. It's just one page, but I'll share it with you. Let me see, hold on, hold on one second. All right, here we go, see if it works. Fingers crossed, you never know.
Once Carlos got knocked. Knocked. Me and the kids were taught. Was confused.
She goes on to write a little bit more, but that's just a glimpse of it turns into stories when that happens. So, thank you, and thanks, friends. You guys may go. Oh, 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 sorry. It's all the computer stuff. So, and so it's been great. We're on the same team, and I'm so grateful for that. And finally, the team at Pleasant Ridge and throughout the district, my first grade team has been amazing. We have worked hours and hours. We plan every week, hours to figure out how to present it in a way to get them engaged, to figure out a way to get feedback, and I couldn't do it with all of them each week. So that's been the one really big thing that I've walked away with this year. So, thank you. Just a little glimpse. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Todd.
I just want to say hi. I'm smiling at, I'm, I'm smiling at you huge underneath here, and great job, and you're a fabulous teacher. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Tell Ryan and Sydney I said hello.
Thank you so much.
Oh, no problem.
Okay, next on the agenda is the action items. These may be new items or those that have been postponed from a previous meeting to this specific meeting or require further action. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the audit report as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Osley. Dennis and, I'm sorry, was, was it you? Okay, and Paul. Any comment?
I would like to invite Jeff Higgins forward. I'd like Jeff to bring his audit form on via Zoom and then conduct.
If you can just come forward. Jeff, do you need the clicker? Good luck topping Ms. Caldwell tonight.
Sorry.
Well, thank you. I will not, not try to top that. In fact, I'm still trying to catch my breath. I'm a little winded from the jumping jacks, but, but thank you and, and good evening. Again, my name is Jeff Higgins. I'm with Plant Moran. We are the district's independent CPA firm here to present the results from the audit for the district's year ended June, I'm sorry. No, okay. Oh, that's fine, might make, make it easier to understand, I suppose. But, but again, I'm here tonight to present the results of the audit from the district's audit for the, it's year ended June 30th, 2020. There's three documents that come out of our audit process. The first one is the financial report with supplemental information, which contains the district's audited financial statement. There's a separate federal awards supplemental information report, which is our separate audit of the federal programs administered by the district. And thirdly, there's a report to the Board of Education, which provides information on the audit process and results. As the district's auditors, it's our responsibility to express an opinion on the financial statements based on an audit conducted in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America, and the standards applicable to financial audits contained in government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States. And I'm pleased to report here tonight that based on the result of our audit procedures, we've rendered an unmodified or a clean opinion on the district's financial statements. So that just basically states that in our opinion, the financial statements are free from material misstatement. This is the highest level of assurance that we can present on a set of financial statements as auditors. And tonight, we're here to present some of the highlights from the results of the audit. The activities of the district are recorded in various funds to show how the particular expenditures of the district are spent and the various revenue is used. We're going to focus on the general fund tonight, as that's the district's primary operating fund and where most of the activity is recorded. The first slide presents the balance sheet of the school district for the years ended June 30th, 2020 and 2019 for comparative purposes. You'll notice that the assets are primarily comprised of cash, which is approximately 6.7 million as of June 30th. Next, there's about 10.7 million in receivables, and then about 3 million of other assets, which would represent interfunds, prepaid, and inventory primarily. The key item on the asset side to keep in mind is that included in your 10.7 million of receivables is approximately 7.4 million due from the state of Michigan for the July and August state aid payments. As we'll talk about in a couple of minutes, the majority of the district's funding is through state aid. The state actually pays that state aid in 11 installments, the first of which is in October, and then it actually continues on through the following August. So what that effectively means is that roughly 18% of the district's state aid is received actually after the end of the district's fiscal year end. All districts are funded in the same manner, and it's just important to keep in mind because it does create cash management challenges for school districts. Again, given that they receive such a significant portion of their. Again, given that they receive such a significant portion of their state aid after the end of the fiscal year end. So where that will come to light is then the liability side of the ledger. You'll see there's roughly 2.9 million in accrued payroll-related liabilities. That primarily relates to accrued wages and benefits related to employees who are paid throughout the summer months for July and August. Then you'll see there's a state aid anticipation note of roughly nine point, roughly $9 million. Celine, like very many districts in the state, has taken out what's called a state aid anticipation note. Again, this is just to help manage the cash flow of the district, primarily as a result of the delayed state aid payments that we just talked about, that you're still expecting to receive as of the end of June. The difference between your assets of about 20.6 million and the liabilities of roughly 16 million is your fund balance of approximately $4.1 million. Next, we take a look at the general fund revenues. And you'll note that this is excluding what's known as the MIPs, the 147(c) payment. This is state funding to support the retirement system. Essentially, what happens with these payments is the state provides money to the district, which it then just turns right back around and hands back to the retirement system. So it doesn't provide expendable resources for the district. So we exclude that just to make it more of an even comparison between the two years. But you note, obviously, that the vast majority of the revenue comes from state aid and state sources. Primarily, that's through the foundation allowance. So again, the foundation allowance is a per pupil amount that's set by the state. So for June 30th, 2020, for Celine, that foundation allowance was $8,133 per pupil. You take that by your official membership count of roughly 5,200 students, and that comprises, again, that combined number is more than 70% of the total revenue of the district. It's important to note, based on that, that obviously the majority of the district's revenue comes from the state. And so local districts have really very little control over their funding levels. They're really dependent on the state, and where that really comes to light is in an issue similar to we had this year. When the COVID crisis hit and the state economy took a significant impact, state aid was actually reduced right at the end of the year in August. There was concerns, as we're into the May and June timeframe, that that per pupil foundation could be reduced by up, anywhere up to $650 to $700 per pupil. That would have resulted in roughly a $3.6 million funding cut for the district. In August, when they went through and did some updated financial forecasts, they determined that they would be able to limit that reduction to $175 per pupil. But again, the result of that was that you received roughly $900,000 less in funding in August than you would have otherwise planned. So again, you're sort of at the mercy of the state, and therefore the state economy for the funding of the district. Next, we'll take a look at general fund expenditures. And again, to keep it even, this does exclude those 147(c) payments that we talked about a moment ago. This graph classifies your expenditures by object. As you can see, roughly 88% of the expenditures are for salary and benefit costs, which is what you would expect. Obviously, a school district is in the people business of instructing students, and the majority of your costs, as you would expect, would be salaries and related benefits. And you can see those percentages are pretty comparable from 2019 into 2020. This next graph provides a little bit more insight on those expenditures, and compares it for how Celine compares to some of your neighboring districts. This graph compares the instructional expenditures of the districts as a percentage of the operating expenditures. Operating expenditures is essentially the total expenditures, less capital outlay, debt service, community services, and transfers, just to provide a more equal comparison amongst different districts. And you will notice that this is as of June 30th, 2019, which is the most recent year for which there's complete data available. But you'll notice that, you know, Celine has roughly 64% of its operating expenditures going into instruction, which again compares very favorable with your neighboring districts. And what this essentially shows is that you have a greater percentage of your expenditures going right into the classroom in Celine. This graph takes a look at the history of the general fund revenue over or under expenditures. It's essentially comparable to, if you would, the net income for the general fund for the year. So if you take your total revenue for 2020 of roughly 62.8 million, less your total expenditures of roughly 61.5 million, this is a difference of approximately 1.3 million, which then adds to your fund balance level. And you can see some of the historical trends of where you've been for the last several years. But the important thing here is that, again, this then adds to your fund balance. And as we talked about on the first graph, your fund balance is essentially your assets minus your liabilities. And again, that number is roughly 4.1 million as of June 30th, 2020. And your, the difference between your revenue and your expenditures in any given year subtracts or adds to that fund balance level. Fund balance is a metric that we really spend a lot of time looking at. It's important from the fact that it represents the financial reserves for the district. It allows the district to plan for unplanned expenses. So if you have, for example, unplanned maintenance or higher-than-expected utility bills, it allows you to handle those types of unplanned expenses. And it also helps insulate the district against revenue losses and funding instability. Clearly, 2020 reflected, highlighted the fact that there is a fair amount of funding instability in Michigan, certainly with this last year with the current financial crisis. And fund balance, again, it enables you to deal with those types of unplanned situations, a little bit more long-term for perspective. And you don't have to make immediate drastic reactionary cuts to things that might pop up throughout the year. And so again, it represents those financial reserves. So the question then becomes, how much fund balance is adequate? This graph sheds a little bit of light on that. This represents the general fund balance as a present of total unrestricted revenue. So again, it would be your 4.1 million of fund balance divided by your unrestricted general fund revenue of approximately 50.4 million. This is a metric that the state actually uses in determining fund balance levels for districts. So back in 2015, the state enacted what's called early warning legislation. And that's designed to identify districts that are showing signs of financial distress. And so the state measure would be districts that are at below 5% of this metric for the last two fiscal years are potentially showing financial distress. So clearly, that's a number we want to stay above. And you can see we've made a little bit of headway this, this last year. And we've been able to move that percentage up from roughly 5.7 to 8.2% for 2020. So we do have a little bit of breathing room, but it's still, you know, important to keep in mind that this would be, you know, we're still below our peer, peer districts essentially, would still be below the state average in that level and that, that metric. And again, with the significant amount of funding uncertainty, you know, the state managed to keep the fund, the per pupil foundation essentially flat for this current fiscal year, but essentially they managed to do that by using up most of the state-level savings. And so, to the extent that there's any continued blimp, blips or interruption to state economy, and if they have issues funding that appropriated per pupil balance, again, the fund balance is gonna be important to maintain our level of programming if there are, you know, happen to be future prorations. So that represents a quick, quick summary of the financial results for June 30th, 2020. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to, to take those this evening.
Hi, thank you. With regards to fund balance, can you tell me what the current, after this last fiscal year, what the current average is in Washtenaw, what the current average is in the state as compared to our 8.2?
I don't have the numbers for the, for Washtenaw specifically. I can give you some context on the state percentage. So the, the common percentage is actually generally general fund revenue divided by total expenditures. And so just from, from that metric, again, using that 4.1 million of fund balance, your total expenditures are roughly 63, 61.3 million. That percentage is about 6.6%. If you look at the state average as of June 30th, 2019, that average was about 14%. And so again, 2019 is the most recent year the data is available. I would say that anecdotally, what we're seeing as results are coming in is that because a lot of districts, when, in that May-June timeframe, they're expecting potentially a $650 per pupil cut, they made some pretty immediate reductions to fund balance, or to expenditures, excuse me. And when that cut only came in at 175, just because of that kind of one-off situation, I would guess that that 14% will probably be something comparable for June 30th, 2020. But again, we're at, on that metric, about 6.6% compared to 14% of the state average for last year.
Jeff, I don't have a question per se, but one, I would like to thank you and Anthony, who spends a lot of time with Miranda in her office. I'd like to thank Miranda Osley and the business office for all the work they did, you know, obviously not only for the audit, but also putting us in a position to have a favorable year. There's a lot of turmoil moving forward, and so to the extent that we can start to, to put ourselves in a relatively stable scenario as we look at the uncertainty that we're facing, I think that's a strong step forward for us. And will only serve to support our staff and students. So, thank you.
Jeff, do you foresee any changes either in accounting principles or procedures that would affect us, or in just what the state might propose?
The big impacts are, again, just what the state's gonna propose. There's really not any significant changes in the immediate future from an accounting perspective. They're gonna have a significant impact on the district. There's a few things that are always changing here and there, but from a fund balance perspective, there's really nothing that's gonna have a significant impact. The key considerations really are just the, the funding for the next two or three years and where that's gonna land.
Mr. Higgins, I have a question. Earlier, one of the earlier slides, you had some pie charts. And they compared the, the bridge, the summer bridge. Last year was about 3.5 million. This year, it was almost 9 million. Nothing exceptional in that, as far as you're concerned?
Uh, I'm sorry, which graph are you?
I, I don't know the number. Perhaps you can go back a few.
Go backwards and.
It's one of the pie charts. Uh, nope. Yep. I think it was a graph, actually, but, well, there we go. That'll do, actually, that would, if you go back, there you go. So under a state and, uh, uh, aid anticipation note, you know, one year it's 9 million, the next year it's 3 million. Is that concerning at all to you, or, because $6 million is quite a bridge to, quite a gap to bridge?
Yeah, I mean, so keep in mind that those state aid anticipations, anticipation notes are taken out typically in August or September. And so you are trying to forecast future cash flow needs. And again, so that balance is up, but correspondingly, you'll see your cash balance is also up. So cash at the end of 2019 was about $1 million. At the end of 2020, it's about $6.6 million. And so it's really just offset by additional cash you had on hand to deal with the summer expenditure. So, again, you're trying to forecast out, what are we gonna need, you know, several months into the future? But it wouldn't, it doesn't indicate to me necessarily that we borrowed a bunch of money and then spent it all, and now we have an issue. It's really just, we have more, on the state anticipation note, we also have more cash on hand to, to utilize to cover our expenses.
Yeah, and I can, I can speak to that. We transition building, our part of transition business officers, and I think Osley, Miranda Osley's approach is to have additional cash on hand. We had some, we became very close relative to cash flow and payroll the previous year. And so because borrowing costs are so low, the idea of having sufficient cash on hand to make sure we don't come in a spot where we're moving things all over in order to make, frankly, to make payroll in these intervening months when our state aid. Our strategy has, in 2020 and as well as this year, has been to borrow slightly more. And again, our cost of borrowing because of various financial markets is very low, so.
So, well, I appreciate that. So the, so the bottom line is the cost of borrowing that money wasn't much of a ding at all on our budget, and I appreciate that.
No, and provided us insurance for cash flow.
Thanks, Mr. Higgins.
Any other questions? Thank you so much, and thank you to the business office for making what could have been scary, a, a pretty good ending result of fund balance. So, it's a lot of work to get to that point.
All right, well, thank you. And I would like to echo our thanks to Miranda Osley and the business office. They do a great job in being prepared. It's a significant undertaking to go through an audit, so we appreciate all their help and cooperation throughout the process. Okay, thank you.
Jeff, can you hand me the clicker?
Okay, so we.
I'd also just like to point out that, you know, again, saying what Miranda Osley and the staff did, there were no material adjustments that were put through on this report, which is, is pretty good. There are no surprises that we have had this year, which is also extremely good. Thank you.
So at this point, we call the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose the same? Motion carried, 7-0. Uh, next on the agenda is discussion items, return to school updates. Superintendent Graydon.
All right, thank you. As has become the, the general norm, we do a weekly, or pardon me, weekly, we basically do. Let me get back to. Get to where we're. There we go. Yeah, get back to the top here. We do, every meeting, we do a return to school update. And so these have shifted from conversations around what type of plan we will be approaching to our information that we're sending to the state, whether it be our continuity of learning plan, or now our extended continuity of learning plan. And really, in the last two meetings in particular, have shifted to tracking the metrics associated with the COVID cases in our community and in our area. And then also kind of our timeline for progress towards more in-person time, as well as opportunities for families to consider what type of instructional model they want. And so that will be the, the, the main focus of the discussion tonight. As this slide is becoming more and more prevalent, the metric associated with how do we determine what, whether or not we move from one, one area of instructional model to another. And so I'll go back to this target, that first line, in terms of what we would want to see. These were numbers that we developed at the start of school, and really looked at the, the, the protocols that were put forth by the CDC at the time, as well as other state models. Several states at the, early in the summer had developed models for reopening schools. We focused on those, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. So those are our targets. Obviously, we don't want to have case, positive cases or cohorts. If you think the zero slash zero, it's, the first number would be a number of positive cases, and the second number is the number of students and staff in quarantine on any given Monday. And then percentage of positive tests in Washtenaw County, percentage, or number of new cases per 100,000 residents, and then some overall things. We have a health committee set up that has representatives from each of the barge units, as well as our nurse Karen Hervey and Dr. Lacha and myself. And we look at, every other week, we look at these numbers. And so on October 15th, we looked at the numbers, and we were, had one positive case and five members of our community in quarantine, which is relatively, frankly, reflecting on it now is great. We, the positive case percentage was below the 3%. The number of new cases in our community was right at our threshold. We had relatively flat. I added the 505 at the time. It was the 493 and the 496 numbers. Those were the, just the straight number of new cases in Washtenaw County over the previous two weeks. Do we have evidence of compliance? And when I talk about compliance, really means mask wearing, social distancing, hand washing, et cetera. Do we see our students and staff complying with our, with our protocols? And the general evidence remains yes. And then kind of regionally, Region 1, if you are familiar with the My Start, My Safe Start map, really looks at this concept of what goes on in our region as it relates to the percentages and numbers. So, that was the 15th. By the 21st, the following Tuesday, we got together as an admin team. We were looking at this idea of being back into a larger in-person model at the, at the young fives to fifth grade model. The numbers have begun to, begun to move up drastically. And we, we put the pause button on and really focused on what does November 4th look like, and indicated that we would be making another announcement to the community early this week. Well, it's early this week, and now the, the next stage that we want, really is what are we looking at currently? And so this is as of, well, the, the dashboard really is the dashboard that's on our website, that we, we will update every Monday. That is actually now less, or pardon me, those are more than what is reported there, but I don't want to confuse people, indicate, I'm gonna stick with the dashboard numbers. We have, as of this Monday, we had four positive cases and 31 students and staff in quarantine. That number is slightly higher now. The positive cases have gone up to 3%, although the My Start page does have us at 3.5, as we're continuing to see growth in those areas. Our cases per 100,000 had gone from nine on the 15th to 23.5. And our number of cases in Washtenaw County are 828 versus the 505 it was the previous week. And on this Thursday, based on just tracking the numbers daily, that 828 will be lower than what it will, assuming we have cases in the next couple of days, will be higher again this week. We still see our compliance in case, and then certainly our regional trend has continued to grow. I think it's important to note what we're seeing in Washtenaw County. I think there's a perception because of the major announcement by the University of Michigan that is that Washtenaw County somehow is, is an anomaly across the state in, in communities that don't have colleges and areas that don't have, are seeing continued growth. We're seeing school outbreaks, and certainly within our own community, we're seeing an increase in, in numbers. The, this is our dashboard, so if you, you look at this, and this is noted. Every week, we do send out a new update on Monday. We work with Nurse Karen Hervey to, to look at these numbers to make sure. Note, you, you can come, you come on the list if you're positive or in quarantine. If you're on a given Monday, you're not, then you would come off. So this is not a cumulative. So, this is not a cumulative list. We do have some opportunity to have, you can see the archived dashboards on there. In addition, we are to post within 24 hours if there is a positive case in the school. And so if you look at the, the note there, but if you were, go to the page with our dashboard, go underneath, you look, click on that positive case updates and each instance that we've notified the community is located there. So, you can still get kind of, if, if members in our community want to look back at kind of where we've been week to week, you can certainly do that. But note that the, the dashboard that will be published each week is as of that Monday, kind of that Monday morning timeframe, as it were. Yeah. Oh, there we go. So, this is the, the reported cases from, from Washtenaw County. This was from the 26th. We had 80, there were 87 cases today, just to note. And so this is again, where we look to see where we're at as it relates to the county of the previous two weeks. And this will be updated from a two-week window this coming Thursday at around 3 o'clock. We will look at that and again, each day, if you look there, you'll see the number per, per day. This is the My Start page. You look at the 3.5%. We are now over that. That number continues to go, go up as it relates, it's still relatively low. One of the things you'll see if you look across the state at various counties, the Washtenaw County number, while the cases per 100,000 is fairly high as it relates to other counties, our positivity rate is relatively low and been told based from the Washtenaw County Health Department that a lot of that is due to a great deal of asymptomatic testing that occurs around the University of Michigan. And so when you're testing different programs and teams that are asymptomatic, it does drive down the positivity rate slightly, although again, it is above the, the 3% threshold. Daily new cases, this is a number that obviously is concerning, it's just evidence of community spread. I think I can look at this graph and know that there's more spread. I can also look around our community and look at our dashboard and see that the community spread is within our community as well. And then this is, this is the, the graph that I think continues to start to gain a little more relevance. And this is a graph and a model that came out after schools had started. The Michigan Department of Health and Human Services delivered this to local health departments as a framework for decision-making for schools and to help schools make decisions about reopening. And if you look at where we're at, you know, our, our percentage of positive tests is in that three to seven rate, that medium risk range, but our, our cases per 100, now they use the cases per million, of course. We can't use the same metric across various groups, but if you do the math on it, we are in the very high range relative to that. And so then when you look across their graph and see, okay, we have buildings with known cases and staff and students, but no ongoing transmission. I do think it's important to note that the cases we've had have not had ongoing transmission from the school setting. But it does put us in a spot where we need to consider reducing density to affected buildings and cleaning contact tracing, et cetera. It really does put us in a spot where if we're considering the move forward, which frankly, I've been considering and an advocate for more in-person time, particularly at our younger levels, based on the guidance from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, they don't recommend it. Conversations with the Washtenaw County Health Department have indicated now may not be the time to move forward with plans to, to add in-person time. And so we find ourselves in a challenging situation as it relates to what we're seeing in our community and our ability to continue to increase in-person time, which I think if you talk to the families that chose the virtual, or the, chose the gradual to in-person model, we want more time. I think if you talk to our staff from an inherent standpoint of wanting more in-person time, the answer is yes, from feeling, is it a safe environment? These types of, of numbers and the evidence we're seeing of, of spread within the community really do have an impact on our staff in terms of their, I think their readiness and I think the, the anxiety level that they feel relative to adding to in-person. So, a couple of, of key points around this, I want to be, be clear. I think I went too far. Just a, a couple of key health points that, that have come up in, in areas I want to clarify. Yeah, I had some, some feedback that, you know, we're, we're not being forthright with our discussions around the fact that there's not been school transmission because how do we have these cases and not have it be transmissionable? There are two things that come out. Exposure and close contact are two very different things. The idea that there's somebody in this building that is infected and that somehow we are all now considered a close contact, we need to quarantine is not accurate. It's not accurate by the Washtenaw County Health Department nor the, the CDC. And it's defined as someone who has been within six feet of an infected person with or without a mask for a cumulative of 15 minutes over a 24-hour period. And that that period has been starting from two days prior to the illness onset and the time the patient is isolated. So, there's this, essentially this period of ability where, where an infected person or a person who tests positive is infectious to others. And so I think that's an important note. One of the things that we've had a couple of times is individuals who have been to school on Thursday don't show symptoms till Monday, they don't come to school on Monday, they test positive. They by definition are not a close contact with anyone who is in school on Thursday. So, again, I think it's important to note when, in some of those scenarios that play out. There are also scenarios where we've had individuals within, within the building that have not been in close contact with other individuals. It's a simple, a little bit easier for staff, obviously, in that sense, and we've worked through those as we go. So, I, I want to be very clear that the presence of someone who eventually tests positive in a school building in and of itself does not mean that everyone in that building is now a close contact. And that exposure and close contact are different and we continue to work through that in a diligent way. We have had students and staff that are quarantined based on being in school with someone who's positive, but we've not had evidence of transmission within school. And that's, that what defines, that is what defines a school outbreak, where you would have multiple cases of positive COVID where that's the greater likelihood that it happened at school. So, the, the other one is the social distancing in younger students. One of the things that we're continuing to see and we continue to have conversations with the Washtenaw County Health Department as well as others, we are not seeing, whether it be in our community or across Michigan in particular, frankly, it's across the country, but we'll put focus on Michigan, the higher infection rates within confirmed transmission levels within students 10 and under. We're just not seeing that level of transmission. And when you think about the, the size of our students, one of the things that the American Academy of Pediatrics has noted is the three-foot social distancing target for younger children. And it simply goes down to the lung capacity and the ability for the, the spread to occur from a seven-year-old is very different than a 15-year-old. And so they are seeing that they're just not the transmission, whether it be from students to students or from students to adults at the younger levels. And so that is one of the reasons why I think we're a little more interested in the idea of can we make safe environments for our young fives to fifth-grade students and make sure that they can be in school a little bit more? I think it gives us hope, although I will tell you, given the spread we're seeing in our community right now, where also gives us pause in terms of the, the level. There's, there's a time and a place for us to move forward and I'm going to be very frank and share information with the community after the meeting tonight, that now unfortunately is not that, that time. So, I will be sharing information with the community later this evening. Secondary schedule, as noted last week, remains the same. We will continue with the same hybrid model through the end of the first trimester, which is now November 24th. That's the Tuesday prior to the Thanksgiving break. Of note, the alternative high school is four days a week in person. I think it's important to note because, you know, we think about, are we taking advantage of situations where we can safely do some of the things we want? And I think that's a perfect example of, of a program that has moved forward with a four-day weekend model because it's best for their students and it can be done safely. So, in alternative high school is a very different environment, fully loaded, than Celine High School is fully loaded. And I want to be clear about that. The second is elementary and we are, we are committing tonight to just stay with the model we have right now for the first trimester. One of the comments we've had from families has been the need for some degree of certainty of around what that schedule looks like for extended periods of time. And while many families who are in the gradual to in-person want us to be in-person more, they also want to know what to expect and be able to plan, particularly as schedules and, and commitments become more and more busy as we, we head into the, kind of the holiday season. We are also hearing our parents as it relates particularly to Friday and the learning format on Friday. And would there be a way for us on Friday, particularly in the morning, to have some more synchronous opportunities for student learning and to really set the table for that day for their learning to occur? And I think that's a conversation that I know our instructional staff had this morning and there'll be more further conversations this Friday in particular with our elementary staff, talking about what can that look like? How can we, even though we know at this point, given what we're seeing in our community, we can't move forward with more in-person time, can we find ways to do some more direct instruction as well as continuing to provide the much-needed time for planning, lesson development and continuing to work through what we call the LMS, which is that learning management system where we know our staff needs to, to house their materials in? Because we do still have a fear that as we progress into winter, we may see periods of closure. And if we do, we need to make sure that we can move quickly and seamlessly to the extent possible into that virtual environment that Ms. Caldwell has been able to show us this evening. So, the, the next steps for us is that we will be in the hybrid learning environment from now until the Thanksgiving break. We have a community survey that will go out on the 5th. That's a, a week from Thursday. Will close on the 9th. And in that community survey, families will be asked to select whether they want a gradual to in-person model or do they want the virtual model? You can choose to remain or choose one of the other options. Of note, it's important to note that choosing the gradual in-person model means you're choosing the model, that means you will be in-person as much as possible and that if it starts in hybrid, it may move to more. So, I, I want to be clear because some people said, I want to choose hybrid. Hybrid is the model we're in right now, but hybrid is not where we are saying we will always be. And so we had some people said, well, if we go to four-day-a-week, I still want two-day-a-week. That's not really an option. It's going to be the gradual in-person is just simply means more. And then ultimately, we know, we really are tracking this, this local COVID metric. We have some, some real positives in place. I think we've had a lot of really important and meaningful conversations around how can we safely move to a more in-person model at the younger levels? And it's in our intention to continue to move in that direction from a planning standpoint so that if and when the, the cases indicate that we can do so safely, we are poised and ready to move to a more in-person model. That continues to be our goal for our gradual to in-person families and we'll continue to work towards that. So, I know that's not the, the news that any of us really probably wanted for tonight in a sense, but I feel like if, if we balance the need for safety and for our students and staff as well as the need to make sure we can provide consistent instruction, that this is the best we can do at this time. So, questions?
Susan?
Oh, excuse me. I personally support you and, you know, I think this is with you communicating with the Washtenaw County Health Department and looking at the data, I think, I think it's wonderful. And, you know, I think it's important how you explain that, that it's not, you know, if there is one case, it doesn't, doesn't mean that they automatically have contacts, right? So, that's good because that, that speaks to the distance that we're keeping at this model. Also, with fully in-person, imagine up to 30 students, right? In the regular classroom, so you're not going to get that six-feet distance. And I noticed that the, the Academy of Pediatrics, that they suggested even three, like three feet, right? So, yeah, so I, I support you personally. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
First off, I want to say I'm glad my name's not Scott Grayden. You know, you, you've got a terrible position to be in and I, and I get that. You know, I also, a couple of things. When they, we do our dashboard and we look at the data from Washtenaw County Health Department, do they, I mean, do they break it down in age groups so that we could? I mean, obviously, we've talked about the spread in the younger groups, age group, it's not as likely, stuff like that. Do they break that down? Is that something that are, I mean?
Yeah, they, they do. And, and, and I will tell you that it's, it's a very small percentage of the cases that are at that level. And the issues we've seen at those buildings so far have been adult, it's been staff issues. We have not seen that, the issue with students below, below heritage, at least with, with a positive case that we're, that we're aware of. We know it's probably happened, but we're not aware of, which I think gives us the opportunity. What we're seeing now is that the community spread is such that it jeopardizes the operation of the school as opposed to the spread within the school, if that makes sense. I think that's the concern and why I think we felt maybe a couple of weeks ago that there was an opportunity because there were these low transmission and infection rates with the students. But as it's spread within our community, it's impacted our ability to staff school.
And the other thing with the, the American Pediatrics saying the three feet, if, if we were to go back in, in person with, let's just say K through 5, because I know it's a little bit different once you get into the moving classrooms and stuff, would we be able to maintain the three-foot social distancing, which they recommend? Or is that not even possible? Because I know we're at 70% roughly.
Well, one, a couple of things. One is now, because we've committed to this model, depending on if we see families that move from the gradual to in-person to virtual, it gives us a better opportunity. One, because you're right, it's about 70% of the families are in the gradual to in-person. So, when you think about that, it's not half and half, it's really 70% and then half and half in the building. And so if we go to 70%, in some cases, yes, in some cases, no.
Not even a three feet.
Not even three feet. Now, I will say, we, we do have, in, in the younger levels, we have a couple of young fives classes and a couple of kindergarten classes that we probably could, could hold that, but it wouldn't be something where I could say any one building could do it. I would also know, we, we always say with our plan that it's social distancing to the, to the extent possible. And we will do our best to do it, but we know that, you know, in these environments, particularly with young students, it's, it's a challenge and our staff has risen to the occasion. But I also don't want to act like it's a hard and fast, never. It's to the best of our ability.
Yeah, and that's what we noted and it was only a strongly recommended in the Phase 4.
Correct.
Yeah, so, so, okay. Well, that answers some of my questions, so, thanks.
I, I also want to say, it'd be really nice to have the kids back, but we have to do it safely. And, you know, I don't like the numbers. I watch the numbers very closely and, you know, it's, it's kind of scary. We do want to keep our, our students and our staff, our staff safe and, you know, we have to do that. That's, that's an important part of what we can do. We, we can teach them from a distance, but, you know, if, if we can't get the teachers healthy and them in the building, you bring them in and, and then we have to shut down the whole district, that's not going to be good for the kids either. It's better to be gradual and be able to continue instruction instead of not having any construct, any instruction.
Yeah, it is a challenge. I appreciate the comment. You know, I'm frustrated. I mean, this is, this is, it's incredibly challenging. It's hard to, to understand what is the, the best approach. Movement from one phase to another phase is incredibly challenging for the organization. It feels like when you're in a spot, you can hold that ground sometimes more than you could make progress. I look at other communities in, in Washtenaw County in particular that are governed by the Washtenaw County Health Department and, and they also have been hitting the pause button for, they're in hybrid or they're in virtual, trying to get to hybrid and have had to hit pause. I mean, it, it really feels like if you get to a spot, you can hold the ground, but making that progress is a big challenge for a variety of very good reasons and I think a variety of very human reasons as well.
So, yes, first, thank you. Thank you to you and your team. I know this is a daily conversation and discussion, so thank you. And thank you to all the teams in the buildings as well, custodial, transportation, principals, teachers, everybody. I wanted to go back to something that struck me when Brian was talking about continuity because that's something that comes up a lot in public comments and comes up a lot for me as a parent and, and, and looking at the subordinate member as well, being able to plan. It's incredibly important to be flexible. When you choose a hybrid model, know that there's a path to in-person when it's safe. But it's also important to, to kind of manage your household. For staff and teaching staff, it's important for them to manage their, their course load. So, with regards to stopping at the second try, I was just curious why the decision wasn't made to go to January and after the break and to give more time? I appreciate the month, I do. It's, it's very, it's very good to know what you're doing for the next month. But I know, you know, we talk about, oh, this other school district's doing this and this other. And I, I know, and maybe you can kind of speak to that too, because we're a different animal, right? We have 5,200 kids as, as compared to some of our friends in neighboring districts. So, what was your decision-making behind keeping it to the try versus going till January and trying something else?
Well, and, and not to kind of share too much, but I think that's, that really was a kind of a large part of our conversation earlier today about what model is going to be something that, that is sustainable. And I, and I'll be honest, you know, the, the two-week window that we've been in since we, we kind of got the hybrid, it, from a decision-making standpoint and from a parent's standpoint, it's really not sustainable. We can't have our administrative team, you know, hand-wringing week after week as to what the next week will mean. That being said, we don't want to give away an opportunity because we, we say we're going to be something for eight weeks and the best time to get to a new model is four weeks in and we're not prepared to move. And so I think that the November 30th one, while a natural break at the secondary level doesn't feel quite as natural at the elementary level, but we tried to hold together with, I say that we will do one more checkpoint in 2020 and that really is on and about the 30th. If we get to that spot and the numbers are kind of where they are now, or unfortunately maybe even worse, then I think the announcement needs to be, and I'll be very upfront with this group, that we. that we would have to look at saying after January. The idea of any type of pause and movement within December does not make sense to me on a variety of fronts, just from a logistical standpoint. And honestly, I don't want to have to make decisions about different models the first two weeks in January. So it would be my recommendation, we're going to have one more look at it because we value an opportunity that might be there. If that opportunity is not there, then I think we're talking about a mid-January conversation before we even think about another move. And so I don't want the community to feel or people to feel like we're going to be looking at this every two weeks. We're going to have to provide that balance of stability. And particularly given what we're thinking about from a winter standpoint, an indoor standpoint, a travel standpoint, going back anytime before, you know, probably that week after the Dr. King Day and inauguration day would be something that we would not want to consider.
Okay, thank you. I like looking at Fridays. I think that that's a really good idea. I totally agree with December. Do it one way or do it the other, and don't do the two-week thing. I did want to follow up on one comment that was made, both in public comment and from the table from you during the last board meeting about teacher changes. And I know you don't have a crystal ball, and I know we're going to do the survey. And I know we also have a possible percentage forecast that might change, you know, from virtual back into in-person and vice versa. But I was wondering if you could talk about any possible teacher changes and what you're thinking about that now?
Yeah, you know, that's something that, you know, it's such a double-edged sword in terms of providing transition points for families is great from a standpoint of not feeling like, if you recall when we said we wanted people to commit for the year, there was a lot of hand-wringing. The downside of not committing for a year is we can't simply move people en masse. And so we've really tried to do some, since I've made some of those comments and tried to be upfront that if you are moving, you may need to move. And if enough people move one way or the other, operationally, it's going to put us in a spot where some families that are not choosing to move might need to consider their options. We're seeing that as a much smaller number than maybe we thought. And I think, I don't want to needlessly scare people who think everyone's, we're going to shuffle the deck. I see, what I'm seeing is that I think the families that have made connections in the virtual setting are happy with those. I mean, you saw what happened tonight. You know, I think the families are saying, this is working for my family. This is working. I value the teacher that I have. I think the same is the case in many cases for the in-person. And so Dr. Latch and I have talked, I would anticipate a relatively small number. And to the extent it's a relatively small number, only people impacted would be those moving in a different direction, which I think they would, making that choice, they would know they would have a different teacher. But I'm seeing very little need at this point, you know, barring any real swings, in people who stay in the same model needing to look at a different teacher. So that's a good question.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, one more thing, yes. So you mentioned the presentation today. I thought that was fantastic and kind of relates into this. Because I know, I feel like there is an over-focus on children, you know, like we want to move to fully in-person, but at the same time, saying that they need more contact. And at the same time, there are families who are fully virtual. So I don't want to leave like that aspect of like what's working, what's not with both versions, right? So I like the positive, positive presentation and everything and know that, you know, teachers are doing both hybrid and in-person. But I just want to point that out that it's.
We have seen a great deal of success in the virtual model for families that have chosen that and the staff that have chosen that. I think it's been a really, a really great program. And so we talk a lot about the gradual in-person. That's the majority of our families and students, and probably the one that's most challenging for me to manage. So I do feel like we sometimes don't talk about the successes that our virtual families and staff are having. And it's out there, and I'm very proud of that.
Yeah, or what needs, you need on both, you know, both models.
Okay, moving on. Policy committee update, trustee Eastup.
Okay, let me get my notes. So we are scheduled to have a special board meeting, which will be policy committee of the whole. We're calling it special board meeting because all board members are invited to this. So hopefully, everybody, all board members will attend this. But if not, that's fine. But we just want to advertise it as that because there could be quorum. So this will be Monday, November 9th at 6:30 here at Liberty. And it is, basically, we wanted to push this out as a separate meeting for policy because of the return-to-school updates that we've had. You know, the really important things that are going on that should be, you know, priority. So we wanted to schedule this later. So it'll be the second reading and possibly put up for a vote on the Board of Operations Procedure Policy 0175.1, which is the school board conferences, conventions, and workshops. So I have, and you'll receive the packet soon for that meeting coming up. And this will be, we had the discussion about with the first reading. I implemented the changes that we talked about at the table. And then you could take a look at whenever we send it out in the packet. And if you want to get me some comments on that, it could be brought up at the meeting. That would be good. And then we have, there's a draft new policy for the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Advisory Committee. And this will broadly, will include like the structure, the mission, the goals at a district-wide level, and the process of that and what that looks like. So this goes back to putting into policy what we had worked on last year. We had a couple of drafts with the policy committee, so we're going to move forward with that. And that'll be the first reading draft discussion.
And you'll get these notes out to us right away so we have time to go through them and process the policies, the drafts, drafts.
Yeah, we were, me and Scott had talked about by the end of this week.
Yep, okay.
Questions? Yes?
I just had one. So I remembered at a previous board meeting that we did have various Neola updates that we needed to get in. But obviously, the pandemic happened, and those were clearly small and not as important as what was going on with closing the school district. Do we have a little bit of a backlog that we have to catch up on updates that need to go to the website? Or are we all caught up now?
There are a few. We have another update that's coming, as we talked about maybe putting those together with them, so. I would, they're not of what I would consider to be of consequence in a sense, so.
All right. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. The following are offered as part of the consent agenda. Motion noted, will allow for the authorization of all listed items without discussion unless a member of the board requests that any one or all be considered individually. I would like to entertain a motion to approve, to authorize the following items as part of the consent agenda. Approval of the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of October 27th, 2020. Approval of payment of the general fund accounts payable of October 27th, 2020 in the amount of $4,724,252.88. Approval of payment of bond fund two, bond fund series two accounts payable of October 27th, 2020 in the amount of $5,382.76. Receive and file the finance and human resources reports. Approval of the early graduation request as submitted by Superintendent Grayden.
Item A should really be October 13th.
I was looking at that thinking, I don't think that's right. October 13th. Thank you for correcting that.
So move then?
That was Paul and support by Michael. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, oops, those opposed the same? Motion carried, 7-0. Items scheduled on the next agenda.
We will have a human resource report. We've talked a lot about human resources and retention and things. We'll have our update from Assistant Superintendent Ellis. We will also have a budget amendment for the current year from Assistant Superintendent Olesley. And a return to learn plant update.
What are our chances of getting the first graders to come back again?
That might not be a bad idea. That was a good. And I can do 12 jumping jacks next time.
I have to admit, it's been a long time since I've done jumping jacks. It's pretty scary. Public comment, we don't have any other public comment except Brian? So can you also do that again, please?
All right, there we go. If this were a presentation one month into an expired contract, it might be a little awkward to do this a second time. Good evening. I'm Brian Bowes, President of the Celine Education Association. My letter is very much in the spirit of Mr. Grayden's report tonight. On behalf of the certified staff, I do want to thank you and Mr. Grayden for taking this cautious mindset in regard to our teaching models. And as I mentioned earlier, staff are working very hard, as you're aware. The students that have been coming into the buildings are excited to be in the buildings, but there are clearly a lot of anxious staff as it relates to just the rising numbers that Mr. Grayden related to in his presentation. As one high school administrator noted this week, it does appear that, at least in the high school we are, that students and staff appear to be finding a comfortable rhythm within the hybrid model. And I can second that with my own class, my own classes and students in my class. They appear to be finding their footing, relationships are building, and we seem to be progressing pretty well as we get to the final stretch of the first trimester. However, as we know, what we're doing from the Wi-Fi all the way up to the senior level, what we're doing is fragile. And we can see this fragility, evidence of this pretty much daily as our quarantine numbers begin to rise, as we see positive COVID student at Heritage, as we see elementary students who are leaving the classroom to be tested for COVID. We know that this is a state of high fragility. We do continue, however, to appreciate you keeping the health and safety of our students and our staff foremost in your decision-making. We do understand the logistical challenges that are currently posed by this pandemic and our own staffing shortages as relates to trying to maintain these models as well as to move into other models. And then Mr. Grayden has talked about this quite frequently, and I know we're posting positions. And this is not a Celine thing, this is a statewide thing. I know the last week, I believe Jackson suspended, Jackson Public suspended busing for a week. They just don't have drivers. Maintaining continuity right now is incredibly important to our mission. And whenever we have a student or staff that have to quarantine, that continuity is, frankly, it's fractured. And too many fractures, and whatever we're doing begins to break. For these reasons and for many others, we thank you. And we urge you to continue to be thoughtful and measured in your approach to our instructional models and in keeping the health and safety of all the stakeholders paramount when guiding our decision-making process. Thank you.
Do we have any people that have called in? All right.
No call-ins at this time.
No call-ins at this time. So our next Board of Education meeting will be held on November 10th, 2020 at 6:30 PM here in Liberty. At this point, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn, adjourn, adjourn the board study session of October 27th, 2020 at 8:05 PM. Jennifer and Paul. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same? Motion carry, oops, oppose the same? Motion carried, 7-0. I would assume we all want to get out of here? All right, now I have one announcement that if you did not pick up a mask for you or somebody that you love when you came in, grab one. I made too many, and I need to share with people who need them. So please make sure you take them.